To call the zoning board of adjustment to order. This is Mary Ellen McKay, Chair of the City of Nashua Zoning Board of Adjustment. And this is the July 28th zoning board meeting. As Chair of the zoning board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by Governor Sununu as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized to meet electronically pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, I am confirming that we are one, providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We are video conferencing utilizing WebEx through the city's IT department for this electronic meeting. All members of the zoning board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen in to this meeting through dialing the following number, (978) 990-5298, and using the password (273) 974. Public access to this meeting is also provided via WebEx, and a link to the meeting is contained in the meeting agenda available on the city's website. The meeting can be streamed through the city's website, https://www.nashuainh.gov/318/ctv, on Nashua's Community Link. The public may also view this meeting on Comcast Channel 16. Two, providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting through public postings and where applicable, notice to a butters. Instructions have also been provided on the City of Nashua's website at www.nashuainh.gov and publicly noticed at City Hall. Additionally, a link to the public WebEx access for this meeting is contained in the meeting agenda available on the city's website, www.nashuainh.gov. Three, providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anyone has a problem accessing the meeting via phone or Channel 16, please call (603) 821-2049, and they will help you connect. A journey, number four, adjourning the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting via the methods mentioned above, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. The Chair is in control of the meeting to the extent practicable and advisable. The Board will follow the procedures as identified in its bylaws. The applicant will present the applicant's case followed by questions by the Board. We will allow for a rebuttal period as best as possible for persons wishing to speak in favor or with questions or opposition before the Board deliberates and determines an outcome. Normally, the Board utilizes a light timer, which will not be available. However, the Board and all participants should endeavor to comply with a timeframe of 15 minutes maximum for the applicant and five minutes each for anyone wishing to speak in favor or in opposition or with questions. Applicants, their representatives, and individuals required to appear before the Board are appearing remotely and are not required to be physically present. Applicants, their representatives, and individuals required to appear before the Board may contact the Planning Department to arrange an alternative means of real-time participation if you are unable to use WebEx. Documentary exhibits and/or visual presentations were submitted in advance of the meeting so that they may be displayed for remote access viewing. Real-time public comment can be addressed via video to the Board utilizing the WebEx virtual meeting software for remote access. Real-time comments via audio will be addressed at the conclusion of the public hearing. This application will allow users to view the meeting and send a comment or question to the Board utilizing the WebEx virtual meeting software for remote access. The public is also encouraged to submit their comments via email to the Planning Department email, planning@nashuainh.gov, or by mail. Please make sure to include your name, address, and comments. Letters should be addressed to the Planning Department, Post Office Box 2019, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03061. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Zoning board meetings will be held electronically until it has been deemed safe to conduct more typical meetings at City Hall. The zoning board, the Planning Department, and city staff thank you for your understanding and patience during this difficult time. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. Mrs. McKay will introduce staff as well as other ZBA members. Mrs. McKay, our designated Chair, to read Case Number One on the agenda into the room this time. Mrs. will ask applicant, representative, or individual required to the hearing to state their name, address, and if there is anyone in the room with presentation. Mr. Falk, would you call the roll at this time, please?
Absolutely, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Mary Ellen McKay.
Yes.
Steve Lionel.
I'm here, and there's nobody in the room with me.
Rob Shaw.
I'm present, and there's no one in the room with me.
AP Boucher.
Present, and there's nobody in the room with me.
Jack Courier.
I'm present, and there's nobody in the room with me.
Nick Kanakis.
I am present, and there is no one in the room with me.
Jaman Kara.
Present, and there's nobody in the room with me.
Thank you, Carter. And I'm present, and there's two dogs in the room with me, an anxiety-ridden four-pound Loyorkie, and a little Shih Tzu named Bentley.
Ah.
There you go. I will now read.
Do have a quorum.
Good.
Is my name not called?
Excuse me?
My name not?
Your name is not supposed to be called yet.
No.
It'll be called when the case comes up.
And I did want to introduce Mr. Falk, who is our Deputy Planning Director, and Kate Courier, who is also in the Planning Department, the zoning liaison and our, you know, go-to for everything. So.
That's right.
Okay, I will now read the first case into.
May I want to explain who's voting?
Oh, okay. Um, yeah. The zoning board has five regular members. Those regular members are Mr. Steve Lionel, who is our Vice Chair, Mr. Rob Shaw, Mr. Jack Courier, our clerk, Mr. JP Boucher, and myself, Mary Ellen McKay. We will generally vote if we are here and if there is no conflict of interest that the individual Board member sees the need to recuse themselves because of. Mr. Jaman Kara and Mr. Nick Kanakis are our alternate members, and this evening, one of our Board members will be exiting early, and so when he exits, we will alternate cases between Mr. Man Kara and Mr. Kanakis for voting purposes. The all members, all seven of us present, take part in the meeting and the hearing. The only difference is in the voting. Okay, are we good now to move on with our first case?
I believe so.
Andre Elroy, owner, 17 Orlando Street, Sheet 130, Lot 25, requesting variance from Land Use Code Section 190-192, parentheses C, to repave and replace existing driveway. 24 feet permitted, two driveways, one at nine feet and one at 24 feet existing. The 24-foot driveway proposed at 26 feet for a total width of 35 feet. This is in the RB zone, and it is in Ward Four. Is somebody here to present this case? Is Mr. Roy here? Kate, can you see anything?
Madam Chair, I am not seeing.
I think it's Call-In User Five, maybe?
There's Call-In User Five and Caller Using Seven. I unmuted both of them, and it was creating a feedback loop.
I hear that. Um, then it would be nice to know who Call-In User Five and Call-In User Seven were. Can you unmute them one at a time, Kate, so we can figure out who is on Five and who is on Seven?
Seven just disappeared. I just unmuted Five.
Call-In User Five, can you identify yourself, please? We have someone calling in via the phone. Are you able to let us know who you are? I don't know what to do at this point, other than I will.
Madam Chair.
Yeah?
I can try reaching out to them over the phone, see if I can call them. Otherwise, you may want to table it to a later point in the meeting, like we did last time.
Yeah, I'm just gonna move it down. We'll just move on to the second case on the agenda, should somebody, you know, appear so that they could then present this case. I mean, for all we know, they're having problems accessing, so we'll just move it down, and hopefully when they show up, we, they can let us know. We'll find out. Okay, moving on. We're gonna move on to Case Number Two. If that's fine with the Board, does the Board have any problem with us moving this case to the end of the list and moving forward? I mean, okay, I see head shakes, okay, thumbs up. Thank you, Mr. Man Kara. Case Number Two, Mark P. and Kelly G. Woolley, or Woolley, owners, please forgive me if I've mispronounced your last name, 9 Deer Haven Drive, Sheet G, Lot 324, requesting special exception from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, parentheses number three, for an attached accessory in-law dwelling unit proposed above existing garage. This is in the R18 zone, and this is in Ward Three. Are either Mark or Kelly here to present this case?
Yes, Mark is here.
Okay, Mark, the floor is yours.
Okay, my name is Mark Woolley. I reside at 9 Deer Haven Drive in Nashua, New Hampshire. I am at my house, and there's nobody currently in the room with me. Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the zoning board. As I stated, my name is Mark Woolley, and I, along with my wife Kelly, spelled K-E-L-L-I, are the owner occupants of a single-family dwelling at 9 Deer Haven Drive in Nashua. I am before you this evening, speaking, seeking special exemption and variance approval to construct an attached accessory dwelling unit on our property that we will share with my wife's mother. In full disclosure, I'm an employee of the City of Nashua. I have worked for the Nashua Fire Rescue for the past 20 years. If any members of the Board completed a drive-by of our property prior to this hearing, you will note that there's an ongoing deck improvement project at the rear of your property, which has been permitted by the Building Department and is unrelated to the exception and variance request tonight. My wife and I have been homeowners of Nashua since 2003. The past seven years, we have resided at 9 Deer Haven Drive. Prior to that, we lived on Waltham Drive for just about 11 years. Our home on Deer Haven Drive is approximately 2,200 square feet. It consists of five bedrooms, four on the second floor, one on the first floor, which currently is in use as a home office, one full bath, one three-quarter bath, and one half-bath with an attached two-car garage. As you will see in the plans we submitted, our proposal is to construct a single-bedroom living space, which will include an open-concept living and kitchen area, one full bathroom, a laundry closet, and a walk-in closet off the bedroom. You will also note that there's a walk-in closet to be added to the existing master bedroom, which was designed to intend to reduce the accessory dwelling unit's square footage. The request of the special exemption will not be contrary to the public interest in regards to the city's supplemental use in the following manners. While the ADU's square footage requirement is listed at 750 square feet, our request to our project designer in what we submitted was believed to be 748 square feet. In discussions with Mr. Falk during the documentation process, it was noted that the city calculated 761 square feet after reviewing the supplement, the submitted plans, and calculating living space and shared space. The difference is 11 square feet above the 750 square feet. In accordance with the ADU Supplemental Use Regulations, the accessory dwelling unit will only house one accessory dwelling unit on the property. In accordance with the ADU Supplemental Use, the ADU was designed to ensure that the front, side, and rear elevations are consistent with the style of the majority of the homes in our neighborhood. In accordance with the ADU Supplemental Use Regulations, there will not be an addition, additional entryway into the structure, and no additional setback changes from the existing structure will occur. In accordance with the ADU Supplemental Use Regulations, there will not be an additional curb cut requested, and there will be no need for additional parking space requirements. In accordance with the ADU Supplemental Use Regulations, we will provide a covenant for filing with the Hillsborough County Register of Deeds upon approval. In accordance with the ADU Supplemental Use Regulations, the property will not separate ownership. In accordance with the ADU Supplemental Use Regulations, we will not be associated with manufacturing housing as designed, as defined by RSA 674:31. The proposed use will not observe the spirit of the ordinance as the owners of the existing property, Mark, Kelly, and our two children, will remain as the primary occupants of the property. It is our intention that my wife's mother should be the sole occupant of the accessory dwelling unit if approved. A single interior door will join the primary living residence and the accessory dwelling unit. The property will remain as a single-family dwelling with approved accessory dwelling unit. Substantial justice will be done to the property owner by granting this variance because the benefits of the applicant would not outweigh the harm in the general public or to individuals. According to the United States Census Bureau, the United States has a growing population of baby boomers, approximately 22% of our country's population. This population is certainly a new group, as it represents the mothers and fathers of the combined majority of our country's population. As I stated, I work in emergency services, and I have for the past 23 years, 20 here in the city. A large portion of the emergency and non-emergency responses that we respond to are to assist the elderly generation within the City of Nashua. These assistances can be medically related, assistance for falls, or a wide variety of the needs that these residents might have throughout the course of their day. I give you this information to help you understand our primary reason for asking for the special exemption and for constructing our proposed accessory dwelling unit. Our family, like many, has a family member who is part of the baby boomer population. My wife and her two sisters, both of which are property owners in Nashua, have taken the planning of their mother's long-term care very seriously. The decision was made to consider the possible addition of an accessory dwelling unit onto our home, which will ensure my wife's fam, my wife's mother and her family as a, as she becomes a constant part of our life as she ages. We will do the best we can to manage the needs that may arise as my wife's mother ages, and that the responsibility for her care become that of ours and not the various city services. The proposed use will not diminish the value of the surrounding properties, as we feel our proposed accessory dwelling unit addition is within the character of the neighborhood. There are a series of homes within immediate area that share the same physical design as our proposed addition. Two examples would be 14 Catalina Drive and 32 Deer Haven Drive, both of which are the same base structures and have additions over their one-story garages. As far as accessory dwelling units in our neighborhood, I offer two examples, 122 Manchester Street and 40 Deer Haven Drive. Both are single-family homes with multi-generational use. In both of these examples, additions have extended the footprint of the existing family dwellings. In support of the fact stated, we seek your support in granting the special exemption and the variance to allow construction as proposed in submitted drawings. I will answer any questions that the Board may have that I did not address during my testimony.
Thank you very much, Mr. Woolley, and thank you for responding to all of the nine points. Mr. Lionel.
I actually, I have, first, I have a question for Mr. Falk. What we received, this was obviously a special exception for the ADU. What we received was a variance application that looks like it should have been a special exception application, and Mr. Woolley is also asking for an area variance for the slight overage on the, on the square footage. Is, are we good to proceed with this? I'm a little bit confused as to how we should deal with this. Is he here?
He's unmuted.
Well, usually, well, all right. I have a question for Mr. Woolley, then. You stated earlier that there would be an interior door between the accessory dwelling unit and the interior of the house. Looking at the drawings that were sent to us, I don't see that. Where is it?
Yes, sure, Mr. Lionel. The stairway that you see on the back portion of the garage will be added is connected to our kitchen, so there'll be a doorway that goes from our kitchen, and there'll be another door at the top of the stairwell, essentially create, to create drafts. So their intent is that there would be a doorway at the top of the stairs, and there would be a doorway at the landing in the garage.
Hmm. Okay.
Kate, can you drop that for me, please? Mr. Man Kara, I saw your hand go up. Please unmute your mic, sir.
I share Mr. Lionel's concern as to exactly what we're acting on. The agenda does say special exception, but perhaps the applicant can help. I've heard that the walk-in closet to the master bedroom was added to bring the unit below 750, and I saw what I thought on the application was that the square footage of the ADU was 748 square feet. Could you clarify for me what the square footage is of the ADU that's proposed?
Yes, certainly. So the application that we submitted and the design that we had for our, our design team was to be under 750. We submitted to the city for 748, and then when I was told by Mr. Falk about the hearing, I asked for clarification on the purpose, and he told me that there were two. One was the special exemption request for an accessory dwelling unit in the city, and the other one, he said, was that the way he calculated the square footage was 761. And then he further stated that it was a difference of 11 square feet, which he didn't feel was important, wasn't a big deal. He basically stated, and I don't want to put words into his mouth, is that him on there now?
Yes, it is.
Okay, go ahead. I don't want to speak for the listener, so go ahead.
Everybody see me and hear me. I'm sorry, I had some connection issues here.
Yeah, we can see you and hear you, Carter.
Okay, thanks. Sorry about that. The special exception is fine. I got an email apparently from his designer that said the square footage was like 748, I believe, or 749. So we said, okay, fine, you know, you don't need a variance for the, for the size because you met the 750 square feet. I came up with a 751 just from a measurement that I saw from the plans, but that was just me measuring it. I mean, I'm not a designer or an architect, so, you know, he, he said in an answer back that he was gonna be just under the 750, so we didn't have them apply for this, for the variance for the size, and just only for the, the use of the special exception. I mean, even worst-case scenario, I mean, if he takes off three inches from a closet, he's gonna be under, under the 750 square feet anyway.
Carter, is it a problem that the special exception was requested on a variance application form?
Um, I.
Well, he outlined all of the points of both.
I, I wouldn't say so. I think we had, I thought we had a special exception application. I don't have the folder with me.
Me?
Out all last week, and.
Huh. Yeah. How did I not catch that? Oh, he, when he went through it in his address, he outlined all of the points that are part of a special exception ADU.
And I believe he was given the list of the special conditions, the nine points.
Yes.
And Mr. Woolley went over all of those, so, I mean, I, I think he's fine to go ahead. I'm, I don't see any reason to do anything drastic and have him start all over again. I think what he's doing is, is fine. I mean, we, we have it, we have it advertised as a special exception in the advertisement, the legal ad, and everything was for a special exception, yeah. Well, I, I think he's fine to go.
Okay, that, I just wanted to make sure that, that we were doing everything correctly.
I, I think we're fine. I mean, I'll take any responsibility for any mishaps, but I was, I believe, I believe Mr. Woolley's okay. We knew it all along as a special exception. We had it advertised as a special exception. Mr. Woolley and I went over the square footage. I came up with a little bit larger number. We're talking 11 square feet larger. That's the size of basically a stove, square footage-wise, and worst-case scenario, if he submits plans, he takes off an inch or two from a closet, he's gonna be fine with the square footage. So I'm, I don't think our department is worried about the size of a unit. You should be able to meet the ordinance with that. I mean, the addition he's building is, is all new construction. We're talking just a few inches here. It's, it's not gonna make a difference. I believe he can meet the 750 square feet. Mr. Woolley, are you okay with that?
Yeah, Mr. Falk, if we need to expand the walk-in closet that's going off the existing bedroom by, by three feet wider, three inches wider, that's certainly not a problem at all.
It'll take care of it. That's why, you know, I thought, you know, this whole thing would be addressed, and we would, we'd have no problem in having you not apply for a variance for the size, because I thought you were so close, and with the size of your overall construction, I thought it would be met. And that was just me coming up with those numbers. I mean, you know, had I added wrong or something, we're only talking such a very minute amount of size, so I'm really not worried about it from our, from our perspective, and I think you're, I think you're good. It was advertised correctly, and if it's paperwork that we can adjust later on, we can certainly take care of that.
Yeah, and the yard is special exception, and if I filled out the wrong form that was emailed over, I can update that for you. That's, you can do that.
That, to me, that's paperwork. To me, the most important thing is the advertisement and your butter notifications, and the paper, the yard sign. That was all for a special exception for an ADU. We're not gonna worry about that little square foot of size that's off, so I, I'm, I'm comfortable with it going forward as a special exception.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Does anybody else on the Board have any other questions for Mr. Woolley? If not, Kate, I want to check and see if there's anybody present who wants to speak in favor. I have an email, but I want to give anyone here present.
Madam Chair, I see no hands up in the audience. As a point of note, I do see the applicant for Case Number One.
I saw that as well. Thanks, Kate.
So we can do him after this case.
That was my intent, Mr. Falk. I would like to then read this email that I am in receipt of. It says, "I am writing to you to support the ZBA approval for Case Number Two on 7/28/20." Mark and Kelly, Houli's in-law addition to their home at nine Deer Haven Lane. I am their next-door neighbor at seven Deer Haven Drive. And I have no issues or concerns with the changes they have planned, and I hope the ZBA sees fit to approve their request. Sincerely, Ben Kershaw." And I have no other emails. You see no other in favor? Is there anyone else here? Is there somebody here who would like to speak with questions, concerns, or issues with this application?
Madam Chair, I see no hands and no one unmuting themselves in chat.
Okay, fine. If that's the case, I'm going to close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Boucher.
I'm good with the application. The applicant, I think, did a great job in presenting his case. Went over every thing that I would have had a question on. I think it's straightforward. Again, I'm not concerned with the size. I know with the new construction, it will meet the size. I think it's, fits in with the neighborhood. The applicant is correct. You know, I did notice some other homes in the area that have these additions over the house. So I think from the street, from looking from the street, I don't think that we would really know the difference, what's going on. So with that, I think to me, it's pretty clear cut. I support this application.
Thank you, Mr. Boucher. Mr. Lionel.
I'm generally in support of the application. The only part that concerns me was that interior door. I, I'm a little bit unsure that the design that enters, opens into the garage qualifies, but I'm prepared to ignore that. So I support the application.
Thank you, Mr. Lionel. Mr. Shaw.
I'm in support of the application. I think all the criteria are met, and I have no issues with it.
Thank you. Mr. Carrier.
I'm in support. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yep, okay. I'm also in support of the application. I appreciate that the applicant, you know, has engaged with what appears to be a professional planner, and they've thought through the criteria. And these projects where they're thought through with like this tend to, what you see is what you get, and you don't get surprises along the way. So, you know, and also, you know, all the criteria for a special exception is met in the presentation, as Mr. Boucher said, as well as the application. So I'm good with it as well.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Minkara.
I agree with my colleagues, and I also support the application for all the reasons stated.
Thank you. Mr. Knakis.
I also support the application for the reasons previously stated.
Thank you, sir. And myself, Mary Ellen McKay, I choose support the application for all the aforementioned reasons. Is there somebody who would like to make a motion? Mr. Boucher, thank you, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the special exception for Mark P. and Kelly G. Houli, owners of nine Deer Haven Drive, sheet G lot three twenty-four, requesting a special exception from land use code section one ninety dash fifteen, table fifteen dash one, number three, for an attached accessory in-law dwelling unit proposed above existing garage. It's in the I-18 zone, Ward three. We find it is listed in table of uses. We find it will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impaired pedestrian safety. We find it will not overload public water, drainage, sewer, or other municipal system. We find that the special regulations, specifically the ADU special regulations, are fulfilled by testimony of the applicant. We find that it will not impair the integrity or be out of character with the neighborhood or be detrimental to health, morals, or welfare of the residents. So I make a motion to approve the special exception.
Thank you. And do we have a second? Thank you, Mr. Lionel. Okay. Mr. Lionel, how do you vote, sir?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw, you vote, sir.
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Carrier, how do you vote, sir? I need you to unmute. Thank you.
Mr. Carrier votes in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher, how do you vote, sir?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
And Mary Ellen McKay also votes in favor. Mr. Houli, you, that's five to zero. You have been granted your special exception. What we like to tell people at this time is that there is a thirty-day window of appeal. Someone may or may not appeal. If you have any questions, comments, concerns, please refer back to either Mr. Falk or Kate Carrier, and they will help you with that. Other than that, that, thank you, sir, and good luck.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Have a good evening.
You too. Okay, what we're going to. What we're going to do at this point is go back to case number one. Mr. Roy, can you hear us? Yes? Okay. All right. I need to read the case into the record. Okay. Andre L. Roy, owner seventeen Orlando Street, sheet one thirty, lot twenty-five, requesting variance from land use code section one nine zero dash one nine two, parentheses C, to repave and replace existing driveway. Twenty-four feet permitted to driveways at nine feet and twenty-four feet existing. The twenty-four-foot driveway proposed at twenty-six feet for a total width of thirty-five feet. This is in the RB zone, and it is in Ward four. Mr. Roy, you now have the floor.
Can you see me?
No, but we can hear you.
Okay, I'm on it. Now? Okay. The twenty-four feet, after all repair and all kind of, I had to cut trees, cedars, all that stuff. Now I have twenty-six. And I think it would look okay to do twenty-six if I could. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, sir.
Because I'm not, I'm not used to this computer thing, so bear with me. And it would look good, actually. And as far as the walkway, I know it's wide. I was wondering how wide can I get a walkway? Yes, that's the old, the old driveway. There are no more cedars, no more maple trees, and that curved wall doesn't exist anymore. So that's why I gain two feet from the original paving. Do you see it?
Mr. Roy, this is the most recent one I could find on Google Drive by. You also provided a sketch. This is what was provided.
Yes.
The Google photo is from 2011, it says.
Yes.
The picture is old. It's an old picture. Since then, I have no more trees around the property. That curved wall does not exist anymore. And since I can, the trees, cedars, I gained two feet. So I didn't know about twenty-four, but I got two feet more, so whatever. I was wondering if I could keep the twenty-six. And that's part one. And part two is the walkway is nine feet now. I was wondering how wide can I get a walkway? If I can get one. Excuse my French, but I do the best I can.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Roy. And I think in answer to your previous comment, we all have issues some days with that computer thing. But so I understand completely, the walkway is now just going to be a walkway? It's not a driveway? And I'm going to look to Mr. Falk to understand if it's a walkway and a driveway. Then can you clear up some of this for us, please?
Chair, we were, we were under the impression that that nine-foot space was a parking space, and that's why we had it as part parking. Kate, there might be a plan that shows the, or that nine-foot spaces. I don't know if you have in the packet. I don't, sorry, I don't have that with me, but.
I there today, it looked like there was a vehicle parked in that, in that space.
We had it as a driveway. I thought I saw a picture or something with a vehicle parked in it. It's basically the width of a one-car parking spot. So we had it as a driveway. Generally, you don't park in a walkway, like a walkway that goes up to your front door. Usually, I don't park there.
That was the confusion. So thank you, Mr. Falk. Mr. Roy, is it your intent to use that as a walkway and no longer park vehicles within that space?
Yes. I was told it was too wide. It was built twenty years ago. And if I, a walkway should be what, four, five feet, whatever, I'll reduce it, make it a nice walkway. And, you know, plant flowers around it or grass, whatever, I'll reduce it. No more cars in the front. I hate to get rid of it because all my neighbors have a walkway. It looks nice, and I'm just trying to keep it if I could.
I think that probably what we're just trying to clarify, sir, is that it's not going to be utilized as a driveway. It's just a walkway. Does any other member of the board have any other questions or comments? Mr. Carrier.
Well, I, I, am I, yeah, I'm unmuted. I, I'm thinking that the request before us is keep the nine feet as a driveway and to keep, and make it official that the other driveway is twenty-six feet for a total of thirty-five. That's the request before us. But I'm a little confused now from the testimony because if that nine-foot driveway is truly a walkway, it doesn't qualify for a driveway. It shouldn't be nine feet wide, and certainly there wouldn't be a car on it. And if it were reduced to a walkway, which is maybe four feet wide, you know, you wouldn't have a car on it. And the request before us would be for a twenty-six-foot wide driveway or a two-foot over it. So I'm, I guess I'm, so I'm still unclear on exactly whether it's what the request is. But I guess because the written request is a total of thirty-five, that's, that's the request.
That picture, that picture really shows it looks like a driveway with a car there. That's why we had it as a driveway.
Oh, so, okay. So the request was for the driveway? And, I mean, when you look at it, that's exactly what it looks like, Mr. Falk. So if this was reduced by four feet or so, and it was only a walkway, then the only request would not be for thirty-five feet. It would be for twenty-six feet. Is that correct?
Yeah, we wouldn't count that as a driveway. If that nine-foot space there was reduced, it would just be like a walkway from the street to the front door.
Okay, thank you. I, I'm going to look to other members of the board to see what their thoughts are on this and if we need any further clarification or if we want to work that. Kate, can you reduce that picture for me, please, so I can see the board? Thank you very much. Mr. Boucher.
So I'd like to ask Mr. Roy a question. Mr. Roy, just to clarify this, I'm reading this after you spoke. I think I'm reading this differently. So what you would like to do is get your driveway to the twenty-six feet and remove the nine-foot wide area to four, five-foot to make it a traditional walkway. So what you're asking for is to remove the, any idea that the vehicle would park in the front. You're okay with removing that? And what you're looking to get is just an extra two feet on the driveway width so that that extra vehicle, if there was ever an idea of parking there, it would be actually more, a little bit more room in the driveway to park it. So in the end, I think what you're asking for, just correct me if I'm wrong, is that you're okay with removing the nine feet down to a traditional walkway width? So it would just be a walkway, no driveway? And all you're really looking for is an extra two feet on the driveway? Is that correct?
That's right. That's right. Yeah.
Okay, that clears it up for me. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any other questions? Any members of the board or comments? Kate, I don't see any hands. Is there anything in the?
No, Madam Chair.
A small quick comment on just whether it's the thirty-five or twenty-four feet for the driveway. If you look on the GIS map, not the satellite view, it only shows driveway for that twenty-four-foot section. If that makes it easier for us to calculate it as only being currently twenty-four rather than currently being thirty-three, then that may help.
Yep. Right there. And because the wall was removed and the trees were removed, he gained two feet. And what he wants to do is keep the two feet in addition and then eliminate five feet to pare down the walkway to make it a true walkway. That is my understanding. Is that correct, Mr. Roy?
Yes, it is. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions or any other comments for Mr. Roy? I don't see any, Kate.
Okay.
Oh, Madam Chair, do not.
Okay. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak in favor of this application?
Madam Chair, I see none.
Okay. Is there anyone here who would like to speak with any questions, comments, concerns, or in opposition to this application?
I see none.
Thank you, Kate. Then I am going to close the public hearing and open, or open the public meeting. Mr. Minkara.
Well, I think the applicant really clarified what he was looking for in the application. I would just note that, you know, on the application, he did make those notes. But I think with an agreement to reduce what we called the second driveway to a walkway, the request is really minor, going from twenty-four to twenty-six. What he's really looking to do is pave an area that's already there, that's already cleared. As a result, we're moving the wall. So I would support the application.
Thank you very much. And I think probably within the confines of a motion, that could be accomplished. Mr. Carrier, sir.
Here we go. I am in support of the application of the twenty-six-foot driveway. I would say that I had concerns with the twenty-six and the nine in that neighborhood. I think it was out of character. It was like, like all driveway. And so I did have concerns with that, but I'm fine with the twenty-six feet. You know, plenty of room for Mr., you know, for the homeowner's driveway use. So I'm good with the twenty-six. I think it meets all the criteria, in my opinion.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Boucher.
I think with the clarification, again, as, as my other members spoke, it's a minor incursion. And with the removal of the wider walkway in the front to a traditional walkway, I support the application.
Thank you, Mr. Boucher. Mr. Lionel, sir?
I am also in support of the application with the, that walkway reduced in width to something closer to a regular walkway.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Shaw?
I likewise support it. I don't think I have anything else to add beyond what my colleagues have already said.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Knakis?
I'm also in support of the application. I don't think I have anything to add that hasn't already been said.
Thank you, sir. And I echo my fellow board members' comments. And so now, and I'm in support, I would like to see if someone would like to make a motion. And if, okay, Mr. Boucher. And in your motion, sir, I'm assuming that you're going to make that a clarifying motion.
So I just, just for clarification before I start getting going. Number one is, so we all agree, language for the walkway. And are we going to just call it a walkway? Are we going to give it a maximum width footage-wise? And then also, when I present the description of the case, we're going to amend that, right? So when I speak to that, we're, we're going to leave out some of the verbiage that was there to just reflect the 26-feet total, correct?
That's correct. And I see Mr. Carter's hand, I mean, Mr. Courier's hand up, so I would like to ask him.
Well, I guess I appreciate Mr. Boucher's question. And I was hoping that Mr. Falk might know what a walkway width is if there is a standard for that. Because I, I don't think the board may know that. I certainly don't.
Mr. Falk, sir?
To answer Mr. Courier's question, this isn't a public right-of-way or a sidewalk. It's a, it's all on private property. Generally, four or five feet is generally what people use. It's usually enough for, definitely for a wheelchair to make it through, which is usually a minimum of three. But I would say a five-foot, a five-foot sidewalk or walkway is, is sufficient for most everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Mr. Boucher, does that help you, sir?
Yes, it does.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to approve the area variance for Andre L. Roy, owner of 17 Orlando Street, Sheet 130, Lot 25, requesting a variance from land use code Section 190-192, Section C, to repli, to repave and replace an existing driveway. 24 feet permitted, 26 feet is proposed for, so that would be the total width would be 26 feet. It's in the RB zone, Ward 4. We find that the variance is neat, needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property. The applicant spoke about the removal of trees and some work that he had done that left a kind of a two-foot-wide strip that he liked to pave. We find that the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the air variance. We find that it is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. We find it will not adversely affect property values surrounding parcels. We find that it's not contrary to public interest and substantial justice will be served. We are also adding a special condition to this app, to this approval, that the nine-foot-wide walkway that currently exists, in whatever form it's being used, and will be reduced to a maximum of five feet in total width. And with that, I make a motion to approve the area variance.
Thank you, Mr. Boucher. And thank you, Mr. Shaw, for your second. Mr. Courier, sir, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor of the motion.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher, how do you vote, sir?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Lionel, how do you vote, sir?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw, how do you vote, sir?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Thank you very much. And Mary Ellen McKay also votes in favor. So that is five to zero. Mr. Roy, your application has been approved. And as we inform each applicant, you have a, there is a 30-day window of appeal where somebody may or may not choose to appeal the board's decision. If you have any comments, questions, concerns, please re-refer to either Mr. Falk or Ms. Courier. And congratulations, sir.
Okay, thank you for your time, and we'll make it look good.
Well, thank you very much. You have a good evening.
Same to you, all of you guys. Bye-bye.
And we will move on to case number three. Are you still good, Mr. Shaw?
I'm not looking out of here.
Thank you. Case number three, Oscar L. Anis and Charles R. Cobb, owners, 58 Marie Avenue, Sheet 138, Lot 372, requesting variance from land use code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, to encroach five feet into the 10-foot required left side yard setback to construct a 12-by-22 attached garage addition. This is in the R9 zone in Ward 1. Mr. Anis, Mr. Cobb, you have the floor. Please state your name and your address for the record.
Okay, my name is Austria Anis. Our address is 58 Marie Ave, here in Nashua. And what we would like to do is to extend the one-stall garage to accommodate a second car. And we are looking to extend by 12 feet. That would encroach on the, on the extension. It will go from 10 feet to five feet. So roughly, as we've said, we need that five-foot variance. It wouldn't change the driveway. It wouldn't change the grade. The extension would just carry through with the same roof line and the same, just extend the footprint of the house. I don't think there would be any, any objections from the neighbors. I don't know if any is coming in because this being all online, I'm a little, I'm a little new to this myself. I'm more used to going to the board and seeing people and talking to them. I believe my contractor may be on still. He may want to say something in my behalf because it's, it's a little more technical than I would normally handle. And that would be Steve Toller of Gate City Remodeling. If he, Steve's on, you could perhaps ask him to say something in, in reference to the proposed structure.
Okay, I'm going to see if the gentleman is on. You are still well within your 15-minute allotted timeframe. So if you wanted the contractor to speak, he certainly can.
Okay. Can, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
I think the only other thing I would add is that they did-
Mr. Sir, can you please state your name and your address for the record?
I'm sorry, Stephen Torla, in 27 Roy Street, Nashua.
Thank you.
The only other thing I would add is that they did attempt over the winter, I had done some work there over the winter, and they did attempt to, you know, try to protect both vehicles from the snow with a temporary, you know, kind of a temporary garage, if you will, with the canvas over it. And with the snow load, it failed, and it actually damaged his car. So I think that's important to note.
Thank you. Mr. Anis, is there any, are you good with your testimony before I ask if any member of the board would like to ask you any question?
I think I've spoken what our intentions are. I believe it's, it's pretty straightforward. I would open it up to the board and have them see if there's any questions that they would like me to try to answer.
Okay. Kate, can you drop this? Thanks, already on it. Yeah, I know, you're good. You're insubstantiating. Mr. Cobb, I can see you. Did you have something you wanted to state for the board?
Nothing. I think he's said everything. You're going to have to mute yours. I think we're fine. If anybody has any questions, we'd be glad to answer them.
Okay, fine. Thank you very much, Mr. Cobb. Does any member of the board have any questions for Mr. Anis or for the contractor? Mr. Courier?
My question is, I just wanted to clarify, looking at the Meridian survey, it looks like there's just a little bit over 20 feet of distance on the right-hand side of the existing dwelling. I just wanted to clarify if that is the case.
Do you like me to answer that?
Yes, please.
There's currently, with the current garage layout, there's currently 17-foot, I think four, 17.4 feet in the property line from the existing garage.
I guess I was also, I was curious about the other side on the right-hand side. That 20.1, is that the space on the right-hand side there?
Let me see. The actual garage space?
No, this was on the other side. It looks-
Other side of the building.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, okay. It appears so from the, the plot plan here, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thanks, Kate. Mr. Falk?
Madam Chair, I was just going to say that the, the survey from Meridian Land Services, it is stamped by a surveyor, so I would say that that's truly correct, that measurement there.
Okay, thank you very much. Does any other member of the board have any questions for the contractor or for Mr. Anis? Mr. Boucher, do you, did you want to ask? Okay, I'm just making sure. Okay. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak in favor of this application?
I see none, Madam Chair. I do see a holdover hand from Mr. Courier.
Oh, I think he answered, he's-
Let me put that down.
Thank you. Okay, seeing none, I will ask, is anyone here who has any questions, comments, concerns, or opposition to this application?
Madam Chair, I see none, except Mr. Torla. He also has a hand up.
Uh-huh. And he probably, yeah. Okay, then, seeing none, and having nothing here, no emails, I'm going to close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Courier, sir? Comments?
Well, it doesn't, I was concerned if the, you know, it might be kind of tight on the left-hand side, so to speak. But I, you know, there's a, it appears there's a garage on the abutting property. And to me, that mitigates this potential left-side yard setback. It's kind of garage to garage. So my sense is it's not, you know, a negative impact because of that situation. You know, I haven't heard any testimony one way or the other. So the other thing is that 20 feet on the right-hand side, I mean, you know, if there were a fire or something, or need to get back there in an emergency, that, you know, isn't cutting that off. So while I prefer no side yard setback with that garage abutting on the left side, I, I, I think I could find this favorable. I'm certainly open to hear the other support.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Minkara?
I, I would support the application. I, I think that a, a two-car garage is, you know, these days, pretty normal and customary. We did hear the testimony of the difficulties that they had, not being able to accommodate both of their cars within the garage. The width itself at 28 feet is not unusual for a two-car garage. And there really is no other place to put it on the lot. So for those reasons, I would support the application.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Shaw?
I'm in support of it also for pretty much the same reasons I already stated. I mean, there is the entrance door in place, and I think that's part of what ends up pushing the width a little bit more Mr. Minkara's point. And it also concur with Mr. Courier regarding the access to the back and the fact that this kind of basically comes up against the garage on the other side of the, on that side of the property. And there's really, I don't think, a reasonable place to do an expansion to a two-car garage anywhere other than in this fashion where it requires a side yard setback. So for all those reasons, I'm in support.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Boucher?
I'm going to support the application for all the reasons that my fellow board members have already spoken about.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Lionel?
I'm in support of the application.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Knakis?
I'm also in support. And all I really have to add is that it seems that most, if not all, of the abutting properties have two-car garages. So it really does make it more in conformity with the immediately surrounding properties.
Thank you, sir. And I too am in support for all the aforementioned reasons. And so now I would like to ask, would somebody like to make a motion? Yep, Mr. Lionel? Thank you, sir.
Give me a moment here, let's see. Okay, I'd like to make a motion on behalf of the owner, Oscar Anis and Charles Cobb, address 58 Marie Avenue, Sheet 138, Lot 372, requesting variance from land use code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, to encroach five feet into the 10-foot required left yard, side yard setback to construct a 12-foot by 22-foot attached garage addition. This is in the R9 zone, Ward 1. The board finds that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property. The applicant would like a regular two-car garage, which is typical for the neighborhood. And there is no other place for them to put it. So the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible other than the variance. The board believes it is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. It will not adversely affect the property values, values of surrounding parcels. We believe it is not contrary to public interest and that substantial justice would be served. So I make a motion to approve this area variance.
Thank you. And Mr. Shaw, thank you very much for your second. Mr. Courier, how do you vote, sir?
Mr. Courier, Mr. Courier votes in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Lionel, how do you vote, sir?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw, do you vote, sir?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Thank you. And myself, Mary Ellen McKay, I also vote in favor. So that is unanimous. That is five to zero. Mr. Anis and Mr. Cobb, the variance has been granted by the board. And what we are going to tell you is what we tell everyone, that somebody has an opportunity, a 30-day window, to appeal the decision of the board. that somebody has an opportunity, a 30-day window, to appeal the decision of the board. If you have any comments or questions or concerns, please re-refer back to either Mr. Falk or Ms. Courier. And we want to thank you for your presentation this evening, and good luck with your project.
Very much.
You're quite welcome.
Yep.
You're welcome. Okay, we will move on to case number four. Frank E. and Jane L. Andrews, revocable trust owners, 19 Legacy Drive, sheet B, lot 3154, requesting the following variances from land use code section 190-31. One, to encroach two feet into the six-foot required right side yard setback, and two, to encroach four feet into the six-foot required rear yard setback to install a 12-foot by 18-foot shed. This is in the R18 zone, and it is Ward 9. Is either Mr. or Mrs. Andrews present to present this case?
Here.
Okay, Mr. Andrews, the floor is yours, sir. If you would state your name and address for the record.
My name is Frank Andrews. I live at 19 Legacy Drive in Nashua, New Hampshire. We have been here for, this August will be six years. And I'm requesting a variance for the location of a shed, Reed's Ferry Shed on my property. The shed should be six feet from the side property line and six feet from the back property line. I am requesting that my shed be only four feet from the side property line, which abuts lot 3153, which is owned by Paul and Sue Curtis. I have spoken with the Curtises, and they are not opposed to the four-foot placement of the shed from the property line and two feet from the back line, which abuts lot 3152, which is designated as open space. I, the variance, if granted, will not be contrary to the public interest because the variance does not alter the essential rights of any of the abutters or the neighborhood at large. The variance does not threaten the public safety or the enjoyment of the open space. As I've said, we've been here for, this August will be six years, and I have never seen anyone in the open space behind us. By granting me the variance, you are increasing significantly my usable space in my yard. With variance, I have 12 feet from the shed to the house. If I am forced to move the shed four more feet, that cuts into my usable space by that distance, and it'll only be eight feet from the space or from the house to the shed. I really believe there's no diminishment of the surrounding property. In fact, I think that the shed will enhance the, the property value and the enjoyment of the property. It's gonna be a beautiful shed from Reed's Ferry. It will match the color of the house, the shingles of the house, the shutters, et cetera. And finally, by granting me this variance, you are dramatically, as I said, increasing the enjoyment of my property because I will have, pick up four more feet on the back side, which I know doesn't sound like very much, but as I said, you know, we have a very small lot. And I want to thank you for your time, and I apologize for the, my camera not working.
That's fine. I want to thank you for your presentation. And now, does any member of the board have any questions for Mr. Andrews? I don't see any, Kate.
I see no hands, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none? Hearing none? Oh, thank you, Kate. Is there anyone here with questions, comments, concerns, or opposition to this application?
Madam Chair, I see none.
I also see none. Therefore, I'm going to close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Shaw? Comments, sir?
I'm in favor of this application. I certainly think, you know, the rear yard setback is truly kind of inconsequential with the property abutting the open space. There really will be no harm or impact there. I think also the nature of the small lot and the fact that the applicant has already spoken with, with the neighbors that would be most affected by this, and that they have no issue or concern, and that this is at the back corner of the property, which in most likely would generally have the least impact of that kind of extra encroachment. I see, I have no concerns with that, and so I am in support of the application.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Lionel?
I'm in support of the application for all the reasons Mr. Shaw mentioned.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Courier?
I'm in support of the application, for the reasons Mr. Shaw stated. I'd also like to say I think that the two feet, the four feet is enough that homeowner can maintain the shed, you know, as time goes by without being a problem.
Thank you. Mr. Mancara, sir?
I would also support the application for the reasons stated, and would just also add that shed, backyard shed is a normal customary use. The size is fairly standard, and I would note that there are some other sheds in the neighborhood, some of which don't appear to meet the setbacks as well.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Knakis?
I also support the application for the reasons previously stated.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher?
I also support the, the application for the reasons stated by his fellow board members.
Thank you, sir. And I too support the application. And I would like to see if someone would like to make a motion on this application. Mr. Shaw, thank you, sir.
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of the owners of Frank E. and Jane L. Andrews Revocable Trust, 19 Legacy Drive, sheet B, lot 3152. Their request is variance from land use code section 190-31 to encroach two feet into the six-foot required right side yard setback, and to encroach four feet into the six-foot required rear yard setback, which is to install a 12-foot by 18-foot shed in the R18 zone, Ward 9. Now, the variance is needed for the applicant's proposed use of the property. Given the special conditions of the property, the lot is actually a fairly small lot. It does abut open space in the back. The impact of the placement of the shed will not impact with any significance the abutting open space. And the encroachment on the side yard is supported by the immediate others. And we will also, in general, though, by having some still remaining not full encroachment to the setback, will still allow for remanagement to the structure as that would be necessary for maintenance, et cetera. So the placing of structure elsewhere on the property is really gonna greatly impact the usable, relatively small amount of yard that they're in. It's within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. There's no indication of any negative impact on the property values. The applicant deserves the improvement to the property value, not contrary to public interest and substantial justice would be served. And with those limitations, I'm moved to approve this area of variance.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Thank you, Mr. Boucher, for your second. Mr. Shaw, how do you vote, sir?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Lionel, how do you vote, sir?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote, sir?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote, sir?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Thank you. And Mary Ann McKay, I also vote in favor. So that is a unanimous vote. There's five to zero. Mr. Andrews, your variance has been granted by the board. As you know, you have a 30-day window of appeal where someone could challenge the decision of this board. So please be aware of that. If you have comments, questions, or concerns, please re-refer back to either Mr. Falk or Ms. Courier. Thank you for your presentation this evening, and good luck with your project. He's muted. Mr. Andrews?
Yes. Hello, I'm here.
Okay. Now he's muted. Okay. Um. I think at this point, it's about, it's about 10 of, I think I'm going to take about a five-minute break, and then we will come back. I just, yeah, I think that works best right now. Thank you. I'm waiting for Mr. Lionel. (audio cut off) I'm waiting for Mr. Lionel.
I didn't, I'm here.
Oh, okay, I didn't see you.
Because I had my camera still off.
Well, see, we weren't going to start without you, sir. Okay, in this case, since Mr. Shaw had to leave, one of the alternates will be voting, and Mr. Mancara, you will be voting on this case, if you don't mind, sir. Okay, and then I will alternate, and we will then go to Mr. Canakis, then back to Mr. Mancara, and then back to Mr. Canakis. So that's the general pathway that we will be going. Okay, welcome back, everyone. We are now going to read case number five into the record. Eleanor M. McDougall, family trust owner, One Long Avenue, Sheet E, Lot 82, requesting variance from land use code section 190-192C to exceed maximum driveway width, 22 feet existing, 24 feet permitted, 41 feet proposed. This is in the RA Zone Ward 4. Ms. McDougall, are you here?
Hello? Hello?
Hello?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, the floor is yours. I just need you to give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Eleanor McDougall. I'm the owner at One Long Ave National in New Hampshire. I live here during the week, and I live in Laconia on the weekends. We bought this house in 1984, and at that time, there were two cement driveway spots, I guess, parking spaces. And, you know, that was okay at that point. Now, we need it to be a little bit bigger. And a few years ago, I had a contractor put in, you know, pretty up the walkways and everything, and he recommended this crushed asphalt kind of a driveway, and he put that all over there. That was a huge mistake. When the plow guy comes when it snows, he, like, plows that in the snow, and it's almost stacked down to the cement. So I would like to have a paved driveway, but I'd like it a little bit wider, well, a lot wider, so that we can park all the cars in the driveway and none of them on the street. And paving out of Hudson is going to do the job, providing I get the approval from you folks.
Okay. Do you have anything else you would like to add at this point in time, Mrs. McDougall?
Well, it's just going to be a plain driveway, no frills. I don't think it's going to upset the neighborhood. Other people in the neighborhood have paved driveways, so it'll, you know, blend in. And I don't think it's going to cause any harm to anyone. And it's just going to be more convenient, and it's not going to get all broken up by the plow guy.
Thank you. Yeah, they have a way of doing that.
Well, he tries. He really does, but he's not a good thing to work with.
Well, and that is life, and it happens to all of us, Mrs. McDougall. Trust us. Do any of the members of the board have any questions for the applicant, Mr. Lionel, and then Mr. Courier?
Yeah, the application says wants space for one additional vehicle, but almost doubling the width of the driveway seems much more than that. Why?
Well...
Why, why did you go all so wide?
Well, actually, when that contractor put all that broken-up gravel or asphalt or whatever it is, that was enough for three cars. We're just trying to extend it for the fourth car. And he didn't really build anything. He just put that stuff down. It wasn't like, you know...
I'm very familiar with the crushed asphalt product, and it's unfortunate properties. Thank you. Courier, I think you're up next.
Okay, yeah, this, the application is for 41 feet proposed. The app, that, the application, the sketch has 43 feet wide. I'm wondering, is it 41? Are you asking for 41 or 43?
I think maybe there was a typo, because when I sent in that sketch, that's what it was for. And then when I saw the 41 on the notice that you folks sent out, I thought, well, I guess they're only going to go for 41, which is, I'm sure we can fit the four cars that way.
It may have been a typo.
Excuse me, Mr. Falk?
I think it may have been a typo, because I think the plan shows 43 feet, and the drawing shows 40, 43. For some reason, we have 41, but...
I guess I had one other question in addition to that. And is that, is Long Avenue dead end at your house, or does it sometimes go through?
Yes.
Or is it, that doesn't go through to the business?
No, it does not. Grinny's Automotive is at the end, and they have a gate there at the end in case the fire truck needs to get through. But there's no travel through that.
All right, thank you.
Does...
You're welcome.
Does anyone else have any questions? Okay. Is anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this application?
Madam Chair, I see no hands and no comments in chat.
Thank you. Is there anyone here who would like to speak with questions, concerns, comments, or opposition to this application? Don't see any, Kate. Okay, thank you. If that being the case, I'm going to close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Boucher?
So just, I just want to understand, just following from Mr. Courier's question, just from Mr. Falk. He said it was a misprint. So in this case here, was it advertised as 41 or 43? Is it just a typo on our, on our paperwork? What's, what's the deal, if you don't mind, sir?
It was advertised at 41, so...
Okay.
Should it be a typo? I know they had 43, and for some reason, one put, one got in the ad instead of a 3, but they intended all along for the 43.
All right, so, so with that, Madam Chair, I'm going to state that I'm in favor of the application for, for specific reasons. Notwithstanding that there was already three spaces kind of existing, whether or not, you know, you know, obviously exceeded the, allowable driveway width, but some of the special conditions that, that apply here is that it's on a dead-end street. There is no other person going down the street. Again, she stated that the gate there is basically in case there's a fire. She did state that, the applicant did state that, you know, in, in some cases, they're parking on the street because they don't have the driveway. So I think, again, getting the cars off the street is, is a good thing. Also, because of the driveway, the situation there, I think you can't go too cars deep, pretty much. So I think it makes sense to me. I don't think that it impacts anybody or anything. So with that, because of this location, the, the, no issues with traffic, there's nothing there, no one will see that. I'm in favor of the application.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mancara?
I, I've been frankly struggling with this one, simply because the exceedance over the 24-foot requirement is, is so significant. So helping me along, I, I think I, I'd be looking to my colleagues, where I, you know, where I'm inclined to support the application is because of the location on this dead-end street, the fact that it appears to be a budding or railroad right-of-way, there's a business catty corner from it. We haven't seen any objection from the neighbors across the street. So, and I think to Mr. Boucher's point, it's not uncommon to have a driveway that's wide enough for two cars and deep enough for two cars. So parking four cars, you know, at a residential home is, is not unusual in this case because of the setback of the house from the street, the triangular shape of the lot. There really isn't an option to do that. So that can get me there. I can't say I'm there yet, but that, but that could certainly help get me there. I'd be interested to hear what some of the other colleagues think.
Thank you, Mr. Mancara. Mr. Lionel?
Like Mr. Mancara, the, the excessive width compared to what the ordinance says really bothered me. But, you know, then there are these extenuating circumstances, and, and I didn't see that the, the house had a garage. I mean, certainly, if it did have a garage, I would, this would be a flat no for me. But given the location and the, and the shape of the lot and all that, I'm, I'd probably be willing to go along with it reluctantly.
Thank you, Mr. Lionel. Mr. Courier?
The fact that it's a dead-end street and the triangular shape of the lot, and, and almost get me there. I mean, I, I do, I am stuck on the advertised at 41. I think it would be problematic to approve a greater overage than that. But also, I think 41 is, even by the applicant stating, oh, I still get my cars in there at 41. I think that's more than enough for four cars and a grade overage. So I don't, I'm uncomfortable going 43 because it's only been advertised at 41. We've never done that. But I think 41, I'm there with that. I think it does apply the applicant to the solution where I'm at.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Canakis?
I agree largely with what's been said. I think it is a very large request, but because this is a pretty unique property between the shape, depth of the current driveway, and a budding a railroad, and being on a dead-end street, I think I'm leaning in favor of it. I'd like to defer to the rest of the board as to the 41 feet being advertised and what to do about that.
Thank you, sir. And I agree with everything that's been said. It's excessively large. It's a dead-end street. There is no garage. Advertised at 41 would be uncomfortable at 43. All the comments resonate, and I, I concur with all of you. I would like to now take the vote. Mr. Boucher, sir, how do you vote?
There's been no motion made yet.
Oh. Again, I'm trying to, you know...
So...
Speed up the process.
So, so I'm, I'd be more than happy to make a motion. I would be making the motion for the 41 feet. The 43 is out to me because it wasn't advertised that way. It's an overage.
Thank you.
I would make a motion for 41 feet. I think there may be some members, I don't know if the members are ready yet to go to the voting. Once they are, I'll make a motion. If no one has anything else to say, I'll, I will make a motion.
I would say, go ahead and make your motion, sir.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the area variance for Eleanor McDougall, family trust owner of One Long Avenue, Sheet E, Lot 82, requesting a variance from land use code section 190-192C to exceed the maximum driveway width, 22 feet existing, 24 feet permitted, 41 feet proposed. It's in the RA Zone Ward 4. We find that the variance is needed to enable applicants to pose use of property, given the special conditions of property. The special conditions are the odd shape of the lot, the proximity of the house to the street, and the fact that it's on a dead-end street, and that direct neighbor across the street, there's a, there's a residence, and then there's a business, and they have access to the businesses only for emergency purposes only. We find that the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. We find it is within the sphere of intenting the audience. We find it will not adversely affect property values or surrounding parcels. We find that it's not contrary to public interest, and that substantial justice would be served. So again, I make a motion to approve the area variance.
Thank you, sir. And do we have a second? Thank you, Mr. Mancara. Now I will take the vote. And thank you, my fellow board members. Always keep me on target and honest. So thank you. Mr. Boucher, how do you vote, sir?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Mancara, how do you vote, sir?
Mr. Mancara votes in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Lionel, how do you vote, sir?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
Thank you. And Mr. Courier, how do you vote, sir?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
Thank you. And Marion McKay also votes in favor. And so, Ms. McDougall, your variance has been granted by the board. And as we keep saying, there is a 30-day window of appeal where somebody may challenge the board's decision. And should you have any questions, comments, or concerns, please re-refer back to Mr. Falk and to Ms. Courier. And as stated, it is for 41 feet. But congratulations. Good luck with your project, and thank you for coming this evening.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And thank all of you.
Okay, moving on to case number six, and Mr. Canakis will be voting on this case. We will all take part in the meeting and the hearing, but it will be Mr. Canakis doing the voting this time. Case number five, Natalie and Mark Blattenberger, owners, 105 Hills Ferry Road, Sheet 117, Lot 253, requesting variance from land use code section 190-192C to exceed maximum driveway width, 24... You hear that feedback? Okay, 24 feet permitted, requesting to repave one 12-foot-wide driveway on Hills Ferry Road and one 18-foot-wide driveway on Hillside Drive for a total of 30 feet. This is the RA Zone Ward 3. Mr. and Mrs. Blackenberger, I see that you're here. You have the floor. You have 50. Where's the feedback?
It looks like it's coming from the Blattenbergers.
Uh-oh.
Every time I unmute them, that's what I get.
Yeah.
Maybe if they tried logging off and on, it might help.
She's, she's trying to say something, but of course... Is that better? Of course. Um, is there a way that, could do away with their computer audio and calling?
Could they mute their speaker? Perhaps their speaker on the computer, turn that off while they speak.
Oh, yeah, there's that.
I think if they call in, that may be the best option.
Yeah.
Yeah, that feedback loop will not go away. I would recommend either logging off and on again, that might help, or calling in on the phone. the phone.
Could we provide them with the phone number?
Yes. The phone number is as follows. And whenever they're ready, I can give them the meeting number access code.
She needs the code sheet.
I was waiting for her.
Yeah.
Can you hear us?
I can.
And we can hear you.
Much better.
I'm so sorry about that.
That's okay. You now have your 15 minutes to present your case, but please state your name and address for the record.
Okay, my name is Natalie Blattenberger. I reside at 105 Hills Ferry Road. I reside with my husband, Mark Blattenberger. We're requesting a variance for repairing and replacing our retaining walls and driveways. We purchased this house back in 2015 and at that time there was two established driveways. So what we're looking to do right now is if you could look at driveway A, which is the smaller of the two driveways, there's a lot of different, like frost heaves almost like, there's a lot of bumps and cracks. So we're looking to actually remove that driveway, place a new one down, just so it's a little bit easier to drive on. And then there's two retaining walls, which we're looking to also replace. They're made out of timber ties right now and they're rotting out. The left wall actually is missing the top two layers. And then the remaining timber ties, many of them, they're actually hollow. So they're not actually very sturdy at all. And then driveway B, which is the larger of the two driveways, we're looking actually just to put a top coat on that. We did speak with Chad Akhving, who when he came to assess and give us an estimate, said that the driveway itself looked beautiful. They just, when they actually placed the driveway initially, they never actually sealed it off properly. So we're just looking, just like I said, just to put a top coat on that, but also to replace the retaining walls around that driveway too. So at the top of the driveway, there is additional timber ties, which when you look down, the timber ties are actually kind of leaning into the driveway. So we're looking to make that a little bit more sturdy and safe. And then if you look onto the right hand side of the driveway, there's actually no retaining wall. So the grass and the bank actually kind of reroutes into the driveway. So all in all, we're looking just to create a driveway at the lower half that is easier to use. If you have a lower car, you actually kind of bought an electric car multiple times. And we're just looking to reinforce or replace our retaining walls so that they're more safe, they're more sturdy, creating more support. And quite frankly, I think our neighbors would probably appreciate that because there's a lot of rotting wood that's going on. So it's a little bit of an eyesore. But by removing all of that and kind of getting rid of that and just making it a little bit more of a safe area is essentially what we're looking to do.
Thank you. Does any member of the board have any questions? Mr. Courier.
I just wanted to clarify, I believe I heard the applicant say that when they purchased the house, these driveways looked like they had existed there for quite some time. I just wanted to clarify that that is the case.
Yeah, so we purchased the home in 2015 and both of them were already existing. From what I know, the initial driveway, driveway A, was the original driveway to the home. And then back in 2005, the previous owners actually made that addition, which is kind of like the L-shaped corner towards the back of the house. And at that time, they put in driveway B.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anyone else have any questions for the applicants? Seeing none, I will ask if there's anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this application.
Madam Chair, I see no hands in the audience other than Mr. Courier's holdover and no comments.
Thank you. Does anyone present want to make any statements with concerns, issues, or opposition or questions about this application?
Madam Chair, I see none.
Thank you. Then I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Minkara, sir.
I'm always troubled when we're asked to basically legitimize or approve something that was already done, that wasn't done legitimately or consistently with the ordinances. In this case, it wasn't the applicant, it was prior owners who put in the second driveway. What they're looking to do is merely repave what's already there. So generally, I would be disinclined to burden someone with the hardship of having to remove something that's already there. They're really just seeking to improve it. So that inclines me, you know, more favorably toward the application. And also the fact that it is a corner lot, it's a funny corner, but it is a corner lot so that the two driveways are not on the same street. They're on different streets, which has less of a visual impact and less of a practical impact. So still struggling a little bit, but that definitely leans me towards supporting the application.
Thank you, Mr. Minkara. Mr. Boucher, sir.
I'm going to support the application again. As we know, the situation pre-existing, pre-existed this new owner. And well, from what we hear is the addition was put in 2005. They must have done some research. So at that time, again, we're talking about 15 years ago, that second driveway was put in and then it was the original driveway. So with that, again, I agree with Mr. Minkara. I wouldn't want to burden the new owners with something that was done years and years ago. I think it works. You know, I don't hear any complaints from anybody about the two driveway situations on the corner lot. So with that, I'm going to support the application.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Lionel.
This is, this is my immediate neighborhood and I drive and walk by this house all the time. Given that it was, it's been there that way for many years, I don't have a problem with allowing them to replace it, you know, in place.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Kanakis.
I agree with what's been said so far and I support the application.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Courier.
I agree with what's been said so far, particularly Jay's encapsulated everything in support of the application, primarily because it's been there a long time and hasn't tractioned the neighborhood.
Okay, I got that you were in favor of that, Mr. Courier, but you were fading in and out. So I just wanted to make sure that you were actually on the record in your voice, not mine.
Yep, I'll just repeat that. Can you hear me better now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm not sure what happened there. I, as the other members have said, I'm, for the same reasons, I'm in favor of this, particularly it's two different streets and it's been there quite a few years and hasn't been a problem with the neighborhood. So I'm in favor.
Thank you. And myself, Mary Ellen McKay, I too am in favor. This is also my neighborhood. I don't walk it or see it as often as Mr. Lionel, but I'm very familiar. So, thank you. And now I would like to ask if someone would like to make a motion. On behalf of the Blattenbergers, Mr. Boucher.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the area variance for Natalie and Mark Blattenberger, owners of 105 Hills Ferry Road, Sheet 117, Lot 253, requesting a variance from land use code section 190-192, section C, to exceed the maximum driveway width, 24 feet permitted, requesting to repave one 12 foot wide driveway on Hills Ferry Road and one 18 foot wide driveway on Hillside Drive for a total width of 30 feet. It's in the RA zone Ward 3. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's possession of the property given the special conditions of the property. Again, through testimony, through discussion, we learned that these driveways pre-existed this owner and have been in place for quite some time. We find that the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. We find that it is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. We find it will not adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels. We find that it's not contrary to public interest and that substantial justice would be served. So again, I make a motion to approve the area variance.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Lionel, for your second. Okay. Mr. Lionel, how do you vote, sir?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher, how do you vote, sir?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Kanakis, how do you vote, sir?
I vote in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Courier, how do you vote, sir?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
Thank you. And myself, Mary Ellen McKay, I also vote in favor. That is five to zero. That is a unanimous approval on your variance, Mr. and Mrs. Blattenberger. As I've stated throughout the evening, there is a 30 day window of appeal where someone may or may not challenge the zoning board's decision. And if you have any comments, concerns, or questions, please re-refer back to either Mr. Falk or to Ms. Poyer. Thank you for showing here tonight, presenting your case, and good luck with your project.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody, for the support.
Okay, moving on. Case number seven, and Mr. Minkara will be voting on this case. The Grace Lutheran Church owner signs now applicant, 130 Spit Brook Road, Sheet B Lot 2428, requesting the following. A determination whether a material change of circumstances affecting the merits of the application has occurred or that the application is for a use that materially differs in nature and degree from the variance for an electronic changing message sign that was denied by the ZBA on 4/28/2020. And if so, to variance from land use code section 190-101, Table 101-7K, to allow manually changeable copy on ground sign. This is the PIR 18 zone in Ward 8. And it, yes. Is there somebody here to present this case? And Mr. Falk, is there anything that we need to do a little bit differently? And I went to you first. I saw Mr. Boucher's hand, but I want to ask you for you to jump into this first, please.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be happy to. This is something that the board doesn't see very often. There was a request from the church back in April for an electronic message center portion of a ground sign. And that portion of the variance was not supported by the board. Now they're asking for something that our staff has determined is somewhat similar. It's a manually changing reader board on the sign, where the last one that was denied was electronically changing reader board. So we think the best thing to do first is to go through the Fisher versus Dover determination to decide whether or not the board will hear this case. Now, if anybody is not aware of that loss, of that lawsuit, that was back in 1980, it was Clara Fisher versus the town of Dover. And basically what the board has to do is determine that either the request is substantially different or that there's been a substantial change in the neighborhood. And I have brought this to the attention of the applicants and they did provide a description of why they think it's a, why they think it's a different type of a request. So the board has to determine that first. If the board determines that it's substantially similar to the variance for the EMC that was denied in April, then this case cannot go forward. If the board determines that it is a different request, then the case can go forward as a variance because manually changing letters are not permitted in the zoning district. So that's where we stand right now. That's what the board needs to do first.
Okay. So help me out here, Mr. Falk. Do I open this up to the board and ask their interpretation? Is there something we need to tick off, you know, question wise as to is this different? Is that not different? I don't want to get this wrong or incorrect. I just want to do the right thing. Mr. Falk.
Sir, I think the applicant can go over the Fisher versus Dover determination first and then stop that. And then the board can determine whether or not to go forward with the case. I'm not an attorney, but I think Mr. Minkara and Mr. Kanakis, I believe that's the process that they need, they'll need to do.
Okay, then I'm going to open it, the floor to the applicant to address the Fisher v Dover comparison.
Only, not the, not the actual request, just the Fisher versus Dover portion of it first.
So please keep it very, very insulated, only to this topic. We cannot go past that.
Understand. Okay.
Now, if I could have you both, since you're both going to speak, at least you need to give us your names and addresses for the record.
My name is Charles Raz. My address is 24 Diamondback Avenue in Nashua.
Okay.
My name is Kent Hubner. My address is 16 Parker's Drive, Hudson, New Hampshire. And I'm speaking for the owners of the property, Grace Lutheran Church.
Okay. And.
I'm going to defer to Charles to speak to the difference, what we think are the material differences.
The floor is yours, sir.
Okay, thank you. We believe that the material differences are in four different areas, not just one. And between a manual changeable copy sign and an electronic changeable message center. The appearance difference, first of all, between a manual, or we'll call it an MCC for short, a manual changeable copy, portion of the ground sign, is it has the same kind of appearance as the other portions of the ground sign. And that is that it's of the same material. It's used in the other portions of the sign. It appears in daylight, non-illuminated, as the other portions of the sign, of the ground sign. And so is very different from an electronic message center, which is illuminated during the daytime and has a different appearance from the rest of the portion of the sign, the ground sign. The second difference is that the frequency of message changes is quite different. An electronic message center can be changed every few seconds and programmed to do so. That is actually literally impossible to do with a manual changeable copy sign because it takes several minutes to change just the manual letters on one side and then you have to go change the other side. Requires a person to go out, take the letters out, and it's very, it's a very different, we believe, fairly different and between the two signs, the electronic and the manual. The third difference is the daytime lighting. I mentioned that electronic message center is on during the daytime to illuminate the messages, whereas the manual. to illuminate the messages, whereas the manual changeable copy just uses reflected sunlight like the rest of the sign. So that's a material difference. The electronic message center message is not readable in daylight without that lighting and brightening of the LED lights in the message center. It would otherwise be black. So that's different from a manual changeable copy, which is readable with regular daylight. The fourth material difference is the operational brightness and actually the look and feel of the electronic message center. Some claim that they don't like electronic message centers because of the brightness, it has a commercial look, it has a big-city look or a Las Vegas kind of style, and thus doesn't fit in the neighborhood. In contrast, the manual changeable copy has a neighborhood look and feel because it goes along with the rest of the sign. The MCC is much more subdued than an electronic message center. And in fact, in, in the zoning table 101-7, the electronic message center is a separate line from a changeable copy center. And electronic message centers, as the board noted in April, is not allowed into the PI zone, but a manual changeable copy sign is allowed in the PI zone. So those are, those are the four or five material differences that we think warrant the board to see the difference in the Dover case. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to ask for comments at this point from the board. Vastly different. Mr. Mancara?
I'm muting myself. I mean, frankly, I would agree with the applicants. I think an electronic messaging sign is materially different from a manually changed messaging sign. And as noted, they're treated differently in Nashua's ordinance, and they're treated differently in every sign or ordinance I've ever worked with. So I would say they are materially different.
Thank you. Mr. Kanakis?
I think I agree with Mr. Mancara. I feel there's enough of a difference coming in with a non-EMC sign that I think that we could rehear the application.
Okay. Mr. Lionel?
I believe this is substantially different. In fact, my recollection from the April case was that the sentiment for a manually changeable copy sign was generally favorable. So I think we should go ahead and hear the case.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Boucher?
I believe there's enough material difference to rehear the case.
Mr. Courier?
I agree with the synopsis provided by the church that it is materially different. I don't think there's a material change of circumstances in the neighborhood, but there is a very different application here. So I think we should go ahead.
Thank you. And I agree with my fellow board members. So at this point, I guess... Mr. Hubner, it's, Mr. Courier?
Well, actually, I think we probably need to make a motion. This is what's on our voting sheet.
Thank you very much. This is...
And there's if... Because there's two criteria, just as a reminder. If maybe I am the only one who has this, I don't know. A material change of circumstances affecting the merits of the application has or has not occurred. And also, the application is for use that is or not materially different in nature. So we should vote on that.
Okay, and I see Mr. Carter nodding in the affirmative.
Yeah, this board should make a motion.
Okay. Then I'm going to ask for someone to make that motion. Mr. Courier, thank you, sir. I was hoping it would be you.
Okay, yeah. I'm going to make a motion here again. The applicant is Grace Lutheran Church. As the owner signs now applicant, again, it's 130 Spitbrook Road. And what we're making, I'm making a motion on is a determination whether a material change of circumstances affecting the merits of the application has occurred or that the application is for a use materially different in nature and degree from the variance for an EMC. I'm making a motion to approve the request that it is materially different, that an EMC is materially different than an MCC. And therefore, this is a substantially different application than the board heard April. So I make a motion to approve.
Thank you. And do I see a second? Oh, I thought I saw Mr. Mancara's hand. I had to look, so thank you, Jay, for that. Okay. Mr. Mancara, sir, how do you vote?
I vote in favor of the motion.
Thank you. Mr. Lionel, how do you vote, sir?
I vote in favor.
Mr. Boucher? How do you vote, sir?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Courier, how do you vote, sir?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
And Mary Ann McKay also votes in favor. So that is five to zero. That is a unanimous decision. And now we move forward with the variance. Am I correct, Mr. Falk?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So now it would be incumbent upon person representing the church, Mr. Hubner. Would you please state your name and address again? For the record, do I need to read this case in again since we're coming in a different piece?
Madam Chair, it wouldn't hurt to read it over. I mean, the Fisher versus Dover part was already done, so you can just read the variance section of it, that last line.
So I... Okay. So this would be the Grace Lutheran Church owner signs now applicant 130 Spitbrook Road, Sheet B, Lot 2428, requesting the following: A variance from land use code section 190-101, Table 101-7K, to allow manually changeable copy on ground sign. This is the PIR 18 Zone in Ward 8. Mr. Hubner, if you would please state your name and address for the record?
My name is Kent Hubner. I live at 16 Parker's Drive, Hudson, New Hampshire, and I'm speaking on behalf of the owners of the property.
Thank you, sir. The floor is yours.
Sure. We believe that granting the variance is not contrary to the public interest in that it provides individuals with an up-to-date information concerning things that are happening here at the church. It gives us the ability to let people know the times and dates of meetings, but also services that we offer free to the public. We have a food pantry that we want to make sure people are able to take advantage of. We also offer during the different times of the year what we call block parties, where we invite the neighborhood to come and enjoy free food and other entertainment items. We also believe that the proposed use is within the spirit of the ordinance, and it's in the public interest. It doesn't alter the character of the neighborhood in that Spitbrook Road is a very busy, commercial road. There are other commercial businesses on the road, not necessarily right-of-budding to us, although there is a school next to us, a fire station on the other side, but there's also a strip mall just down the street from us. And I would, I would say also that the majority of our property is really a park industrial. We were only, we're only placing the sign in the in the neighborhood zone in that that's where the access to the property is. And for us to put the sign down in the, in the park industrial portion of the property would cause us to have to elevate the sign quite high because there's a, actually, the roadway is significantly higher than the property at that point. We also believe that there's, again, that contributed to the injustice that's done to us if we don't get this variance is that, again, because of the way the property is split between the two, where the majority of the property is in the park industrial, but the residential portion is where access road is. And so we would, again, we, we want to be able to tell people about things more than just our name, which is what the sign would have to do without the message board. And because of the location of the property, we'd have to move the sign to a different location in order to take advantage of, of the differences between the park industrial versus the residential. Because park industrial does allow us to have a changeable copy sign. And in fact, it would allow us to have a much larger sign if we were to move it down there. But we, we prefer not to have to have a huge sign. And so we really wanted to have a smaller, we don't want to block our neighbors' access. So, and then finally, again, we think that the changeable copy sign is, is going to be consistent with the neighborhood's appeal in that the neighborhood is not just residential. It's, it's really more commercial than it is residential, although across the street, there is a condominium complex. They also have a sign that's in front of theirs, although it's not changeable copy. People driving down the road are looking to have signs that, to tell them what's, you know, what's, what they're going by so that they can find the place that they want to go to. And so we, we would hope that the, that the board would do that in a special condition of that you literally, if you went literal, residential area does not allow changeable copy. But the park industrial portion of their property does. And so we think that that is a special condition that could allow the board to approve our request for variance.
Thank you.
May I add something?
Absolutely.
Charles Raz, 24 Diamondback Avenue. So the, just to, just to reiterate the, the point of the hardship of the special condition of this property. The property is split, as you see on the diagram, between park industrial and residential. And the facility, the building of the church and some of the back development of the property, which is below the map that you see, it's kind of off the bottom, is, is in the park industrial area. And to have the sign in the residential area is, is not a hardship, whereas putting it somewhere else would be a hardship due to the split in the property and the geography of the property. So just wanted to make sure that that restriction, actually putting it there increases the safety of people that are looking to turn and find where they're going having it near the driveway as opposed to somewhere else. So there is also a safety issue that, that is in favor of having that changeable copy lying there instead of the park industrial area.
Thank you very much. Does any member of the board have any questions for the applicant? Mr. Courier, sir?
It's actually not a question. I'm just clarifying that Mr. Mancara is voting on this, second to motion.
Yes.
But that's, so, thank you.
I don't see any hands, any questions. I ask if there's anybody here who wants to favor at this time, who have an email. If somebody is present, I will look at them first.
Madam Chair, I see no hands up and no notes in the chat bar. You did receive two emails of correspondence.
And that I have in the chat bar?
The, the comment box for the meeting.
I have one email. No. I just have...
Madam Chair, would you like me to read them both into the record?
Well, I have the one I can read in. And then, yes, I guess I will have you read the second one. I thought I had printed everything out. Okay. Okay. "I strongly support the installation of a sign with the capability of manually changeable messages as requested by Grace Lutheran Church at 130 Spitbrook Road, Nashua. The proposed sign would benefit the community by providing announcements of service times, special events, activities for the neighborhood, and special services like the needed food bank. The proposed sign would be clearly visible and uncluttered. It would not be inconsistent with signs in the neighborhood, including the World Academy sign next door to the church. Respectfully, John C. Norris at 349 Brook Village Road, Apartment 11 in Nashua, 03062." And Mr. Lionel, I would be grateful if you would read the second email into the record.
I would be glad to. The letter goes, "As a resident of Nashua, I respectfully submit my comments for the approval of the MCC sign for Grace Lutheran Church. The sign will not be a distraction to traffic. As a matter of fact, it is a safer sign that it is readily visible, excuse me, readily viewable from a distance from both directions, whereas the older pyramid sign, which is set below street level and 80 feet off the road, is more difficult for the driver to find a clear and a clear distraction when looking for the church. I find the MCC to be aesthetically pleasing with its clean, uncluttered appearance. The sign marks the location of the church, plus has a changeable copy area to advertise ongoing functions for the benefit of the neighborhood and beyond. Because these two functions are combined in one sign, the temporary banner sign and the pyramid sign can be removed to present an undistracted view. I find the design of the sign to be harmonious and within the character of the neighborhood. It is a more elegant sign than the banner sign currently in use for advertising church functions." And it's signed Louise E. Desclos, D-E-S-C-L-O-S, address of 361 Main Dunstal Road, Nashua, 03062.
Thank you, Mr. Lionel. Now, is there anybody present who would like to speak with questions, comments, concerns, or in opposition to this application?
Madam Chair, I see none.
Thank you. In that case, I am going to close the public meeting. And... Mr. Mancara, sir?
I, I do support the application. I, I think for a few reasons. But first of all, having a changeable copy sign, a manual changeable copy sign is very common for churches as for other institutional uses that are often in residential zones, such as schools, where there are multiple different activities that are going on. Because that's, which is typically true for a church. And also, in this particular case, due to the special conditions affecting this property, the fact that it's split zone and a manual changeable copy sign is allowed in the PI portion, it just happens that the entrance to the property is in the residentially zone portion where it's not allowed. So certainly, I think that's a special condition as well as just the very heavily trafficked and commercial nature of Spitbrook Road. So I do support the application. So I do support the application.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Courier?
I will unmute myself here. I am in support of this, really the same reasons that Mr. Mancara said. You know, I also think right up the hill a little further is the elementary school, and they have a changeable copy sign. So if approved signs like this, you know, for some churches, and I'm thinking the one on 111 down by the landfill, seems to work well for them. So I, you know, and it's character with the neighborhood. I'm in favor as it's.
Thank you, Mr. Courier. Mr. Lionel?
I'm in favor of this, and a changeable copy sign is typically what we see for churches, and it would not have any of the detrimental effects that were noted by the community and by the board for an EMC. So I would vote in favor of this.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Boucher?
I'm in favor of the application.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Knakis?
I'm in favor of the application. I just want to get clarification on one thing, and I apologize for not bringing this up earlier. But at the previous hearing, it was brought up that there was an easement agreement with the DPW, because the sign was in the Spitbrook Road right of way. So I think we are going to include getting a signature on that as part of any approval. Is that still an issue, or has that been resolved?
Mr. Falk?
I think the applicant will have to work with the engineering department and/or DPW to get any approvals they need for a sign in the right of way. So I'm sure they're aware of that, and I believe Mr. Raz has been working with DPW to get any approval they need from DPW. They should be all set, is my opinion.
Okay, then, with that, I support the motion.
Thank you very much.
I see the applicant's nodding their head in agreement, so.
Yes. Good catch there, Mr. Knakis. And yes, I too am also in favor of this. And now I would look to see if someone would like to make a motion. Mr. Lionel, sir? Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of Grace Lutheran Church. The applicant has signs now, the address is 130 Spitbrook Road, Jeep B lot 2428, requesting a variance from land use code section 190-101, table 101-7A, to allow manually changeable copy on ground signs. This is in the P-I-R-18 zone, Ward 8. The board finds that this variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. The board has discussed different types of signs. Initially, they had applied for an EMC, an electronic message center sign, or denied that, but a changeable copy sign, the board believes, is much more in line with the neighborhood and typical for churches. The board believes this is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. It will not adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels. It's not contrary to public interest, and substantial justice will be served. So I make a motion to approve this variance.
Thank you, sir. And do I see a second? Don't see any hand. Oh, Mr. Mancara. Thank you, sir. And this is Mr. Mancara. How do you vote, sir? You need to unmute, sir.
Sorry, Mr. Mancara votes in favor.
Thank you very much. Mr. Lionel?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Boucher?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Courier?
Mr. Courier votes in favor, and I miss Kate's otherwise great unmuting of my microphone in meetings past, but I have risen to the occasion here.
I got yelled at last time.
And myself, Mary Ann, I also vote in favor. Gentlemen, your variance for Grace Lutheran Church has been granted by the board, and as we state, there is a 30-day window of appeal, which someone may challenge the decision of this board. And if you have any comments, questions, concerns, please re-refer to either Mr. Falk or Ms. Courier. Thank you for coming back and presenting this this evening, and good luck with your project.
Thank you very much. We thank you, the board. We do have a question, I guess. We'd submitted an application for the sign. Do we need to resubmit that, or can you use the one that we previously submitted?
Mr. Falk?
I believe they can use, I haven't seen it, but if it shows the manually changing copy on it already, we can use that one.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And when we had reached out to the public works, they had indicated they were waiting for the variance approval before they gave their approval, so we will reach out to them and make sure that, I think they were waiting before they got the mayor's signature for the variance.
Sure.
So thank you very much.
Thank you again.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, we will now move on to our final case, case number eight. And Mr. Knakis will be voting on this case. Lawrence Berger, owner, 5 Scotia Way, Jeep C lot 1736, requesting the following variances. One, from land use code section 190-264 to exceed maximum accessory use area, 40% permitted, 74% proposed, to construct a detached 35 by 35, one-story garage in rear yard. And two, from land use code section 190-192C to exceed maximum driveway width, 24 feet permitted, 19 feet existing. An additional 10-foot wide driveway proposed on right side of lot for a total width of 29 feet. This is in the R9 zone in Ward 5. Is Mr. Berger or somebody here to speak?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, Mr. Berger, if you would state your name and your address for the record, and you will have 15 minutes, sir, to present your case.
Lawrence Berger, 5 Scotia Way, Nashua, New Hampshire. So I am proposing a variance for a detached garage in the back corner lot of my property for the simple reason that I have a work van, pickup truck, 30-foot camper, all sitting in my front driveway, and my wife's car. Neighbors probably don't like looking at those eyesores. I had put a variance in a few years back for a small shed on the left side of my house, which will be taken down if this variance is approved, because I will no longer need that for the proposed garage out back. I've already talked with few neighbors surrounding, one of which, Adam Varley, which I believe he is on, who's in favor, which it directly affects because it's on his property line. I believe in the proposal, I have 16 feet off the back and under 12 feet from the right side, so it's not encroaching on anybody's setbacks. And that's about it.
Does any member of the board have any questions for Mr. Berger? Mr. Lionel, sir?
Hi. You have an existing, looks like two-car garage. What are you planning on doing with this rather enormous building?
I have a, two large vehicles, one of which, I'm a contractor, one of which is a work van, 12 feet tall. Plus, I have a 30-foot camper, as I stated, in my personal vehicle. My niece stays with us to help with my two younger kids during all this mess that's going on. So basically, I need more space. My wife takes up the garage, the main garage, it's kind of a small two-car garage, doesn't fit two cars, especially with the size of vehicles nowadays. So basically, I don't like things sitting out front to bother the neighbors. My backyard's a half a lot, it's tucked away in the corner. All the surrounding trees cover it during the summer, you can't even really see my neighbors' houses during the summer months anyway. So basically, just to protect my investments with my work vehicle, personal vehicle, and camper. So yeah.
How, there were no, there were no drawings about the style or size, height of this, of this garage? Is it a one-story, peak roof? How tall is it?
Yeah, it's a one-story, so the walls themselves will be, I believe, I'm working with George Heard, he's a friend of mine, he's helping me out, another local contractor in Nashua, Craig's and O'Sean. I can get the plans from them, they were just waiting for everything to get approved, if it does, before I start submitting heights. I mean, I believe he told me it was 12 feet, and then I had to wait on the trusses from George Heard. I believe he said, I want to say 8 to 10 feet on the trusses. It's just a standard truss. So it's going to look more or less, you know, it won't look out of style just because of the fact that it's going to be almost like a barn-style garage to match with the colonial house that I have now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions? Mr. Courier, sir?
I was just wondering, in the backyard, like, what is the photography like? Is it flat in the back? Does it go down to the neighbors? Does it go up? And also, when you had mentioned, question two was on the height. When you said 12 feet, I didn't know if that was going to be like a 12-foot wall and then roof trusses on top of that, you know, kind of following up on Mr. Lionel's question for how tall it is.
Yep, so the walls would be 12 feet, and then just to fit my work van, which is 11 feet. The trusses, I believe, I just haven't got the specs, because it hasn't been approved yet, so I didn't get that far. The lot is going to be leveled a little bit, just, I think it's like three feet difference from where the front yard is to the back, so a little bit of a level with the fill that I'll have to bring in once that, if that happens. Yeah, it's not like the right side or the back side, already retaining walls from when the development was built. So it's just basically taking on part of that once it gets leveled. It's only going to be, I think, two or three feet to have to get raised up.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Boucher, and then Mr. Mancara.
Can, I ask Mr. Falk again, just to refresh our memories on what's allowed on a one-story garage? What's the height? We're talking about peak and closest to the property lines?
Sure. Well, this would be an accessory structure, so the height, the maximum height of an accessory structure is 20 feet, and the way we measure the building height is the midpoint between the eve and a ridge. So if he's at 12 feet from the top of the eve, I'm not sure what his bridge line is because I didn't have a drawing, let's call it whatever it is, so it's going to be the midpoint of those two numbers. Something, unless it's a flat roof, it's going to be something more than 12 feet, but I can't exceed 20 feet.
Thank you.
Did you have any other questions, Mr. Boucher?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mancara?
I'd just like to ask the applicant to speak for the need for widening the driveway.
It's coming in broken up.
And did you hear Mr. Mancara's question, Mr. Berger?
No, no, sorry.
If possible, could you speak to the need for widening the driveway beyond the 24 feet to the 29 feet?
Yep, so my main driveway of the house is 19, and I just assumed 10 feet would be a normal driveway width. I can shrink that.
Mr. Mancara, did you hear that?
Yeah, I'm not sure I understood, though. So what you're proposing is an additional driveway.
It's coming in broken up, I don't know if it's my connection or...
I can answer. The driveway, if that's okay, Madam Chair?
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Falk, go ahead.
He has the regular driveway that goes to his two-car garage. This new driveway would be on the other side of the house, on the other side, the right side of his property, going past the house to the backyard with the garage, where the garage would be. It would be two separate driveways.
I think by observing Mr. Mancara that he is okay with that. Okay, does anyone else have any other questions? Yes, Kate?
Madam Chair, if Mr. Berger is having issues with his internet connection, I can walk him through connecting by phone, he might have more success.
Mr. Berger?
I can hear everybody now. I think I was just having trouble hearing Mr. Mancara.
But should you need assistance, please let us know, and Kate will help you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, Kate, now, I know that I have one email here, but I want to see if there's anyone present here who would like to speak in favor of this application.
Madam Chair, we do have Mr. Varley in attendance, and he has raised his hand, I believe he would wish to speak.
Then I think we would prefer to have him speak rather than read an email, so the floor is yours, Mr. Varley. Please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Adam Varley, and I reside at 3 Scotia Way, right next door to Mr. Berger. So I'll just briefly recap what I had said in my email. As Mr. Berger mentioned, he's talked to a number of us about his proposal, and in fact, I've talked to him about it a number of times over the last couple of years. You know, getting to the driveway point, he really has no width on the other side of his house, and it's pretty narrow width on our side. So as he mentioned, you know, he's talked to me about the need to have additional space for the vehicles, as he mentioned. And so the new driveway that he's proposing would directly about my lot, it would run essentially from the, on the edge of his lot and the edge of my lot, and the driveway would be back in the back corner of his lot. And so, as I said, he's discussed with me a number of times, gone into detail with me about the plans. You know, I think it probably most directly affects me, and, you know, my wife and I don't have any concerns, and we fully support his request for the variance and understand the need and the limitations in the front of his lot where he would not be able to expand, for example, his existing garage. So we are fully in support.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this application? Do you see anything, Kate?
Madam Chair, I see no hands raised in the audience.
Okay, thank you very much. Excuse me, I will now ask if anyone would like to speak with questions, concerns, or opposition to this application.
Madam Chair, I see a hand raised by Mr. Joe Tringali. I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly.
Yes, you are.
Okay, then, Mr. Tringali, if you would please state your name and address for the record.
Sure. My name is Joseph Tringali, I'm resident of 12 McDonald Drive, Nashua, New Hampshire. I'm going to speak in terms of the garage. As was already mentioned, Mr. Berger has a two-car garage already. This structure is 35 by 35, which is rather excessive in size even for a three-car garage. I'm concerned with the number of cars and the commercial vehicles, given that this is a family residence and not a commercial zone. I do not think that it fits with the rest of the neighborhood, it's completely out of character with the rest of the neighborhood.
Uh, I have been at this residence for 29 years, enjoying the green space that is behind my home. Half of that has been wiped out for clearing for this garage. Right now, the, the wall that is exposed, that is the foundation of this garage, is a concrete wall that's 10 feet high and 35 feet, uh, long. Uh, the landowner is looking for a land use of 74% proposed, which is nearly double the permitted limit of 40%. It's clearly not in the spirit of the ordinance of 190264. And I have concerns that will negatively impact my property values.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak with concerns, opposition or comments?
Madam Chair, it looks like we also have a Mr. Mike Nastaja. He may have questions.
Mr. Nastaja, if you would state your name and address for the record, please.
He did unmute himself originally.
Yeah, it looks that way from my direction.
If not, he may be here to simply listen.
Okay. Um, is there anyone else who wishes to speak with concerns, comments or opposition to this? Yes, Kate?
Madam Chair, we do have, uh, Mr. Nicholas Bujoir. I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly. But he said in chat that he will let his email he submitted speak to his comments.
Okay, then I, if there's no one else who is, wants to speak, who is here, I will read that email into the record. Do you see nothing?
Madam Chair, I see none.
Thank you, then I will read the email into the record. And I hope you did pronounce his name right because that's how I'm going to... Okay, and if not, then I apologize. Hello, my name is Nicholas Bujoir of 20 McDonald Drive here in Nashua, New Hampshire. My family and I recently purchased and moved into the home this June. I believe my backyard borders Mr. Berger's backyard. For the record, I believe the board should deny Mr. Berger's request for variances because the structure will be an eyesore in my backyard. Foundation that has been poured and the backhoe parked in Mr. Berger's backyard is already taller than my privacy fence. So I can only imagine what the full structure would bring. My questions for this hearing are below. I look forward to the discussion this evening. One, how tall is this structure planned to be? Two, how close is the structure allowed to be to my property line? Three, is this structure going to be used for business purposes or is this just for personal use? There is already an attached garage on the house. Four, why is the foundation poured back in June, but this is joining, going to the planning board for a variance now? Thank you, Nicholas Bujoir, 20 McDonald Drive, Nashua, New Hampshire. Mr. Berger?
Yes.
You have five minutes to address the comments and concerns that were raised this evening.
Okay, so the structure itself is, uh, on the right side, I believe. 12 McDonald Drive, not 10 feet tall. It's eight and then it steps down to six and then four. It's all going to be filled in and leveled. We are planning on putting a fence surrounding the area as far as the backyard. I'm 16 feet off the setbacks. It's supposed to be, I believe, 10 for a detached garage. There as well will also be a repainting wall, back build and fence. Not being used for commercials, personal, like I said, trying to protect my investments and my vehicles and my camper. So as far as those few things go, I didn't really take down any green space from 12 McDonald on his property. I took down three trees on that side that abutted his property. Um, one of which was rotted fully through. Other than that, I think that, and then this, oh, it's 20 feet. They already submitted that question. 20 feet is the height requirement for the building structure itself.
Okay, um, and now, um, I realize that people are on the phone. But somebody who spoke in opposition has the opportunity to speak, but only one person. Or you can choose to let your case rest as it is.
Madam Chair, I see a hand up from Mr. Tringali.
Mr. Tringali?
Yes, I was just, I was just wondering...
Excuse me, I need you to get your name and address for the record, Kate.
Sure, my name is Joseph Tringali, 12 McDonald Drive. In, in terms of, um, Mr. Berger's comments, um, I was just wondering if, if the city independently determines where the property line is on, on that side, on that side of my house? Um, as well as, I'm, I'm looking at this foundation and maybe it'll be, uh, maybe there'll be fill put in, but I'm looking at a very tall wall. And, um, and I can't see it through the trees at this point. I'm sure in winter time, it's just going to be, um, uh, this, this foundation and then whatever structure sits on top of it. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Um, okay. I don't think we go back again. So there's any, um, at this point, I'm going to close the public hearing. And I'm going to open the public meeting. Mr. Boucher?
I'll put the, um... Yes, I, I, I don't, you know, I'm looking at this and, you know, of course I was wondering why, uh, we need the garage in, in the back. And then of course I drove by the property and, uh, you know, a couple of different times over the last weekend, you know, didn't notice. Again, kind of confirmed or, or I know, understand now what the applicant is looking to do. Obviously with his work vehicle and trailer. So, um, the, the garage in itself, um, I don't have a problem with its size. Uh, you know, again, we're here because it, it exceeds the, uh, the, the use, uh, accessory structure, use size. But, um, me, the benefit is, um, for me, looking at this application is, uh, I, I think, um, in some respects, um, I could say that it may add some value, um, to the neighborhood because we're going to take a lot of the stuff off the front of the property, um, and put it away in the back, right? To store it in the back. So in that, in that respect, I, I can look at it that way. I understand the concerns of the neighbors. You know, Mr. Falk kind of verified, and, and again, I'm sure that when he go, if, if this were to be approved, when we go through the, when he goes through the process, the, you know, the, the, the billing is going to have to be, uh, approved, um, in, inspected. So I don't believe that, that applicant's going to be able to do anything more than what's allowed for the, for the accessory structure, the one-story garage. And again, this is new construction. This is not something that's existing or, 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 you know, other issues with that. So, so with that said, um, I, I'm kind of right in the middle on, on the garage. I, I, I can, I can get there. As far as the driveway goes, um, we're looking for an extra five feet, uh, off the, uh, in, in excess of the, um, 24 feet. Um, again, knowing what it's for, understanding that, um, you know, what the whole property is and the design of the property. I guess I have no problems with that either. I don't have a problem with the, I don't have a problem with the driveway overage, um, irregardless of the, regardless of the garage going back there or not. So, uh, with that, I'll just listen to what else is my board members have to say.
Mr. Lionel, sir?
I understand that we're not being asked to, uh, pass judgment on, on, directly on the, the size of this garage. And it meets all of the setbacks. So there's not much we can do about that. However, um, I don't think this, uh, uh, meets the, the character of the neighborhood standard. Uh, I think the ask for accessory use, uh, uh, area is excessive. That applicants buy, uh, enormous vehicles and then, then come to us and say, well, I need to put some place, you know, to, to store them. To me is not a good reason to approve such variances. If the garage was maybe, you know, this was second garage, um, was a more normal size, uh, for such things. You know, I, I wouldn't have too much, you know, I'd have less of a problem with it. But to me, 35 by 35 is, is just too much to, to take. And I, uh, would not be in support of this application.
Mr. Kanakis?
I was very much on the fence with this one, but I think I'm leaning more towards, um, being against this application for the reasons given by Mr. Lionel. I just have a, a really hard time seeing how, um, this fits the character of the neighborhood. And it seems like it would really stand out and can't see a way to make it really fit in.
Thank you. Mr. Minkara?
I, I, I would agree with the comments from, from both of my colleagues. Uh, I, I'm, I'm concerned about the size of the structure. Were there no garage on the property now? I may feel differently, but the fact that there is a existing garage, um, you know, a, a, a second garage of this size seems to me to exceed what's ordinary and customary. It's not compatible with the neighborhood. I, I will say also that the applicant did say that he is a contractor and that was one of the reasons why, um, the garage was desired. And, and again, that's not consistent with the residential use. I, I would also say I, I don't see the second driveway particularly coming off the same street as being compatible, uh, with the neighborhood, uh, I, either. So I, I would not support the applicant.
Thank you. Mr. Carrier?
Well, I, I, I'm struggling with the application. I had asked Mr. Falk, uh, yesterday, and once again, he always promptly replies on my questions. I was like, well, we're, we're here tonight a lot for this large overage, you know? And what goes into part of that overage is the pool. There's a big pool on site behind the house. You don't really know it's there, but we know it's there because it's in the application. And, and I, I think Mr. Falk said it was about 55% accessory use if the pool wasn't there. And I guess I was asking the question to see if I could get there or get comfortable with this application. Like, let's just pretend the pool wasn't there and would the garage fit within the accessory use? But it, that, that large 35 by 35 still picks it, you know, pretty significantly over that, even if the pool wasn't there. So there's that. And the other portion of this application is, I was struggling to, to feel like, does this fit in the character of the backyards? I mean, while I don't really know what the backyards are like, I, I look at it from Google Maps and kind of between houses. I, I, I guess I tend, I, I'd want to rely more on the residents of the neighborhood to say, hey, this is fine. Just like the abutter on the right side is like, I have no issue with it. That was very comforting to me. But there's also two abutters who are, you know, stating it's very out of character with the neighborhood. And that is persuasive to me. And so with that, I struggle on, on the size of, of this. I, I don't know and I don't want to design myself. I, I am curious if it was smaller with, is there something, you know, what, would it, you know, just curious what would it be without that pool? Would it be under 40%? Is there an argument to say, hey, I could build this if, if I didn't have a pool? And, and, but not that I was suggesting taking out the pool or anything like that, but just, uh, you know, for the smaller size work and not be so obtrusive. But for, for what we have in front of us, I'm, I, I'm struggling to support it at this point.
Thank you. Um, and in listening to everybody's comments, um, I don't know, there's a part of me that says, yeah. I agree with Mr. Boucher. And I understand the logic and the size on the garage, but I also understand, um, the size of the equipment and the fact that there's now more vehicles because there's more need. And the, um, overall situation in the, with the COVID-19 seems to necessitate having other people live there to help provide childcare. So there's another need for more vehicles. So in that, I probably would come down more on the side that Mr. Boucher came down on and, um, actually support this application. But right now I'm going to look and see if there is a motion on this application. I'm not seeing anybody want to make a motion. Whoops, Mr. Lionel, I spoke too soon.
Well, if I was to make a motion, uh, I would make a motion to deny. And so we can do that and see where we go. Is that acceptable to you?
Absolutely, Mr. Lionel. Mr. Wait, Mr. Berger, you wanted to say something?
Mr. Berger does not have the opportunity at this point to say, unfortunately, this is, um, this is the way it goes. So. Like to make a motion, uh, the owner is Lawrence Berger, addresses 5 Scotia Way, requesting, uh, sheet C lot 1736, requesting the following variances. One, from land use code section 19264 to exceed maximum accessory use area. 40% permitted, 74% proposed to construct a detached 35-foot by 35-foot one-story garage in the rear yard. And two, from land use code section 190-192C to exceed maximum driveway, driveway width, 24 feet permitted, 19 feet existing. An additional 10-foot wide driveway proposed on right side of lot for a total of width of 29 feet. R9 Zone Ward 5. The board believes this variance is not needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property. There are no special conditions of the property that require, uh, this much of, of overage on accessory use and, uh, extra driveway. The, uh, the applicant has essentially, uh, brought this on himself by, by obtaining multiple vehicles and, and storing, uh, possibly work vehicles. The property already has a perfectly good two-car, two-car garage and a driveway. Uh, so the board does not believe this variance is, is needed. The board believes it is not within the spirit and intent of the ordinance, um, that it, uh, we have testimony from neighbors that, uh, believe it will adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels. The board believes this is contrary to public interest as it is not in character of the neighborhood and substantial justice, uh, would not be served. So I make a motion to deny the two variances.
Is there a second to this motion?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Kanakis. Mr. Lionel, how do you vote, sir?
I vote in favor of denying the variances.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Boucher, how do you vote, sir?
I vote not in favor.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Kanakis, how do you vote, sir?
I vote in favor of denying the variances. I vote in favor of denying the variances.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Carrier, how do you vote, sir?
Sorry, I unmuted myself. I was typing away there. I vote in favor of the denial.
Thank you, sir. And Mary Ellen McKay votes um, in opposition. I do not vote in favor of the denial. So that vote is three to two. Um, Mr. Berger, by that vote, the board has denied your variance. And if you have um, any reason to want to appeal this decision, should anyone want to, um, please re-refer back to Mr. Falk, and I see Mr. Falk with his hand up.
Madam Chair, um, I just want to verify that both requests were considered collectively. The motion?
Um, Mr. Lionel is indicating that, yes, both were.
Sure.
Yep.
Mr. Carrier, yes, sir?
I just want to clarify that as Mr. Lionel did uh, make both requests on our voting sheets, there's two different requests, and both of those are a motion to deny by Lionel and Mr. Kanakis. I have a seconding that. I mean, there was one second by Mr. Kanakis, but I take that as seconded both the motions. We want, we can have Mr. Kanakis verify that he seconded both those motions. And then the vote I have is uh, for both motions, for both requests.
Mr. Kanakis, is that accurate?
Uh, yes, that was my intention to vote to deny both.
Okay.
Or second to vote to deny both.
Okay, thank you very much. So again, Mr. Berger, if you have any questions, concerns, any, anything you need to discuss, please bring it back to Mr. Falk or Ms. Carrier, and they um, will address your needs. And um, I want to thank you for coming tonight. Unfortunately, it did not end up the way you wanted, but that's a conversation that you could, again, have with Mr. Falk.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
You're quite welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, okay, uh, there was, there are no minutes. So we have that not to um, to vote on. And we do have an agenda for our next meeting on the eleventh. And is there, does anyone see any regional impact on any of the cases here? Um, okay, I can't see, um.
I say no. Uh, Mr. Carrier says no.
Okay. Hmm, does anyone see any regional impact on the agenda? No, I see. Excuse me?
Madam Chair, three cases are holdovers from a previous meeting, the first three.
I see that.
We have a remaining one.
Yeah, this is a pretty full agenda. So, um, were you planning on two nights, Mr. Falk, or were you planning on us having a marathon?
One meeting, one marathon.
Okay, you got it.
Ready for all twenty-six miles.
We can do that. We got you.
Yeah.
Okay, so there's no minutes. Um, and so I think.
Motion for regional impact? Yes, no?
No, we um, we went through that and there was no regional impact. Um, so that being the case, the only thing left now is the motion to adjourn unless anybody has something they want to bring up. I don't see anybody jumping up and down.
I'll move to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Lionel. He always comes through. Is there a second? Uh, I'll second that motion. How about that? Okay, Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
I vote in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Carrier, how do you vote?
Once I unmute myself, I vote in favor of adjourned.
Okay, and you know what? It should be Mr. Minkara who votes on this one, if I'm going back and forth equally. So, Mr. Lionel, how do you vote?
I vote in favor.
And how do you vote, Mr. Minkara?
Vote in favor.
Thank you. And Mary Ellen McKay also votes in favor. We are adjourned. Um, thank you all. And uh, we will see each other on the eleventh and be prepared for a long one, folks.